This episode is brought to you by Progressive Commercial Insurance. Business owners meet Progressive Insurance. They make it easy to get discounts on commercial auto insurance and find coverages to grow with your business. Quote in as little as six minutes at progressivecommercial.com. Progressive Casualty Insurance Company. Coverage provided and serviced by affiliated and third party insurers. Discounts and coverage selections not available in all states or situations.
Today on CityCast Pittsburgh, the city council primary might be a snooze fest. The first ever Carnegie Library is getting a glow up and Nippon Steel continues to court President Trump. CityCast Mallory Falk and Francesca DeBacco are here with me to round up some of the biggest stories of the week. It's Friday, April 4th. I'm Megan Harris and here's what Pittsburgh's talking about. Mallory, Francesca, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy Pirates opening day.
It's opening day. The first pitch is at 412, 4:12 PM. I love it when we do stuff like that. I really do. I love it.
The commitment. Yeah. And Mark Vogel's thrown out the first pitch today.
No way.
Yeah, the teacher from Butler County who just recently got back home after being, you know, in a Russian prison for far too long. So it's an exciting day.
Yeah, detained in Russia. I had no idea. That's really neat. I'm glad he's going to be able to be there.
Yeah.
So National Library Week kicks off on Monday. And Megan, Francesca, I know you got to celebrate a little bit early. You got a sneak peek of the renovations that are happening at the Braddock Carnegie Library. I can't wait to hear about this.
Yes, this is actually the first library that was built in the US by this steel mogul, Andrew Carnegie. It is 136 years old.
And it looks it, I gotta say.
Yeah.
A little worse for the wear.
Yeah, I mean, I was there, gosh, a couple of years ago. I think just by a quirk in the library system, I requested a book. And instead of sending it to me, which is how it always works, they did not do that. They're like, you actually have to go to Braddock. But I could not get in because they were closed. And I just think maybe the system didn't know that. It looked like a bomb had gone off outside that building. Like you, there were, there was no way inside. There was rubble everywhere. And if you look through the windows, which of course I did, it was like, it looked like the walls were peeling. Like the floors were ripped up. It was wild.
They've been doing work.
So this was, it was getting sent books even when it was shut down for renovations?
Yes, I mean, they, they had a satellite location. I just don't think the system was representing that exactly correctly, just because of the exact moment I wanted that book. It just like, everything wasn't firing the way it needed to.
All that to say is, Megan, you got a look at whenever it was in the biggest part of its construction phase.
Yeah, I think so.
And it's nearly complete now. And we got to take a tour. It was so fun. I had no idea how big this space was.
Me either.
45,000 feet, square feet. But they were only using about 50% of the space when they closed it down about two and a half years ago to do these renovations. A little background on the space, it's kind of an eclectic medieval style.
Eclectic medieval? That is not a design term I've heard before.
A combination of the two. You'll see when you go.
I mean, from the outside, it's got like that classic, really old Pittsburgh look, like, you know, with the big, huge stones and like the mortar and the arches and all that. But then on the inside, it's more like the skinny wood paneling.
Yeah.
I actually think that's a pretty good description, Francesca.
Yeah. And you know, when Carnegie first opened it, this was kind of his trial of like what he could create in the library. So it used to have a billiards room, a pool.
Like a whole pool.
For, open for the public?
Yeah, yeah. It was for people who lived in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and they had a duck bin bowling alley. And in the basement were like showers, like a bathhouse for mill workers.
Including this really cool tunnel where people, they didn't have to come in through the main part of the library. They could come straight in off the street, being grubby as heck, I'm sure, and not dirty up the library, the books and all the other spaces.
So like a communal Pittsburgh potty?
Kind of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I imagine like plumbing wasn't really a thing like back then. Like not everyone had access to this. So it was like a real asset to have, you know, a washroom in this library. But it was almost demolished in the seventies. So it closed briefly during that period, but members of the community created the Braddicks Field Historical Society. And they purchased the building for $1 and that kickstarted the whole revival.
Yeah, yeah.
I did not know this history at all. And now I'm a little bummed out that we don't currently have like any library branches where you can do duck pin bowling.
Duck pin bowling and go for a swim. I mean, I think part of it is like back in the day, right? Like a lot of these spaces were as much community center as they were what we now call a library. So anyway, this huge space is collecting dust all of these years. But there's also just a ton of stuff that's been stuffed inside it. We talked to Vicky Vargo. She's the executive director of the Braddock Carnegie Library Association. She was talking about how she like personally owns a very old house. And from like day one, when she gets to the library, which was 24 years ago this week. Congratulations to Vicky on her work anniversary. She said the library just felt like one of those houses where you just like look around all the time and you're like, I wish I could do this to it and I wish we could do that.
Restore it to its former glory.
Mm hmm.
I think a lot of it was just, boy, if I had time and I had money, I would just, you know, like to look in the bowling alley or to look in the swimming pool. We made, we made small dens in it, but not like this. Like I, I did not realize how hard it would be to clean this building out. And honestly, people don't save stuff. It's not worth it. You know, you keep saying, I'm going to use that someday or somebody, you know, and somebody will say, hey, the library can use this. And yes, we do appreciate that, but we just had so much stuff here that was not usable and just had to get rid of.
And it's just, it's so funny. She said they goodwillled a ton of stuff. They took a lot to Construction Junction. They gave books away to other libraries, but a ton of the stuff that had been like left there. It was just in such disrepair that they had to pitch it. I mean, can you imagine 130 years of people trying to helpfully donate their junk to the library? And now the library has to do something with all of it before they can start this big renovation.
It's like when people bring used underwear to Salvation Army and it's like, I appreciate the impulse, but maybe.
Tag on or do not bring it here.
Yeah, that's just like, gives you a picture of the feat that they've taken on there. So this construction project has been going on since 2019. It's a $21 million renovation, the entire facility. And they are making all the floors accessible, which is awesome.
First time ever, they, they've been walking upstairs with no air conditioning for 130 plus years.
Yeah, and now they have an elevator, which is awesome. We got to ride it.
Yeah, there's a basement and then there's three floors above that.
Yeah, and they've got new windows. There's going to be an adult library and a children's library. They have the musical, the like original musical, and it's going to be fully refurbished. That's like a 480 seat auditorium.
Did they say what kind of things they're going to do in that auditorium?
I think they're still dreaming, like they were talking about like, there's so many spaces in this library as it's been reimagined that could work for like a wedding, for example, or a big party. But I think it'll also be like perfect and on the level of like the Homestead Library Branch, for example, that has that big hall in there and they have comedy shows and podcast tapings.
Local theater groups can come in.
Bands come in. Yeah, like I think they'll be able to do a lot of really cool stuff in that space.
Yeah, and speaking of like really interesting and cool, I was totally astounded by the renovated swimming pool. Megan, help me describe this, but they're calling it the Book Dive.
It's so cute.
Yeah, it's an event space that they chose to keep it as, as it was as the pool with the like different levels of like the shallow and the deep end.
Well, they were required to, if you recall. So like, we talk about zoning and how ridiculous it can be on this show all the time. Part of the historical zoning of the space is that if anybody ever wants to restore it to being a swimming pool, they have to maintain that.
Yeah.
Like to rebuild this space, even though they don't want a pool there. They are required to make it possible for it to be retrofitted back into a pool someday if they want to.
Right.
I mean, if you're doing a $21 million renovation, why not make it a pool?
Well, they have a cooler idea, I feel like. So it's this really interesting like architectural design with a stairwell and ADA accessible ramps that kind of go down from the shallow end to the deep end. And the deep end can be like a spot for events, like, like we were saying, like they could have like a wedding ceremony. They could have like a small theater group like pop up there. Or you can just go and hang out and read a book. Like it is so interesting. It was really cool.
They were literally still putting bricks up on the wall while we were there. So like, there's a lot of work left to be done specifically in that room. But the windows in there are just really beautiful. It's going to have such great natural light. And also like the lines of like the architecture get mimicked throughout the entire rest of the library. So it's really cool that they've like kind of built these like diagonal spaces all throughout, a really old space.
I mean, if anyone is planning a wedding, saying you got married in the old swimming pool at the first Carnegie Library in the US would be the best claim to fame ever.
I know, I kind of love it.
Yeah, definitely. And just to go through the other pieces of the renovation, they're going to have a ceramic studio in that original bathhouse in the basement that we were talking about. They're going to have a screen printing studio, a basketball court.
The basketball court was there. They just made it nice and painted the walls.
Oh, yeah, yeah. In which another really cool thing you wouldn't expect to be in the library. And different spaces for events and conferences, really just like overwhelmed and impressed with the whole space. So we're really thankful that Vicky and the folks at Mulberry Fairs, Amy and Ashley, gave us a tour this week.
Yeah, definitely. And thank good thoughts for Vicky and her team. They are moving back in on Monday is when it's supposed to start. They have four days that they're moving everything back into this space. And like I said, there were still bricks going up, like fresh mortar happening when we were there this week. So it's a lot of things happening all at once for that team.
Okay, I'm now very jealous I was not able to make it to this tour. So for anyone like me who missed the sneak peek, like when and how can we actually check this out?
On Francesca's birthday.
Yes, May 22nd, they're doing a grand opening, open house, a community celebration. You can just come and look around. They still need to raise more money to complete the project. They said about 350,000. You can actually be a part of that. You can sponsor a musical seat for $500 or just gift, because this is an awesome piece of Pittsburgh history that we hope lasts another 130 years. So I'm planning to be there on my birthday. So come say hi.
If we have any Francesca DeBacco super fans out there and you want to get her a seat for her birthday.
Oh, wait, that's such a good idea. You guys can crowdfund, like you don't have to pay the whole thing.
Francesca crowdfunds so she gets her own seat in the musical. They did stipulate, by the way, that it's not like, you don't get season tickets along with that seat. Like it is just to sponsor a seat, kind of like when you sponsor a brick outside something, like that kind of thing.
And then, you know, since we are coming up on Library Week, like obviously the Braddock Library not open to the public right now, but we have so many branches that you can go check out, you know, go to a Storytime, check out a book. And there are so many other things you can actually get from the library if you've got a card. We had a whole episode on Monday, like all about the most unexpected things you can check out from the library. Baking pans, instruments, yard tools, lawn games. So give that a listen if you haven't already.
Definitely. And one more event to shout out to for Library Week, this one from our neighbors to the north in Cranberry. The Cranberry Public Library is going to be doing a film screening on Monday of a documentary called Free for All, The Public Library. So it talks about the women behind the free library movement.
Heck, yeah.
Which I think is just such a cool piece of history and not one that I was super familiar with before reading about this film. The documentary itself is going to be celebrating the people who built and continue to fight for these essential public spaces. I'm especially excited because the library staff is also going to be talking afterwards about why libraries matter, especially as activist school boards in our region keep trying to push through book bans. And we've experienced a lot of threats to our access to information. Libraries are so important and so relevant to the way we live today and just like an incredible way to access information. So love supporting this and love supporting them. That event is from 6:00 to 7:30. It is free, but they hope that you register just so they know how many people are coming.
Yeah, like you said, Megan, this is all super relevant right now. In case you missed it, actually, recently, the Pine Richland School District just gave itself the power to like bar certain books from ending up in the library. A lot of people are calling it a book ban. So this is happening all over the country, including like right in our own backyard. And so, yeah, this event feels more relevant and more important than ever.
So Francesca, let's lighten the mood a little bit. We've got a trivia question from our trivia master, Kevin Gavin.
Yes, so Megan, you and I were out in Braddock this week. We could see Kennywood across the river.
We sure could. We were as tall as the roller coasters in that building.
Yeah, exactly. And so a couple of weeks ago on the pod, we talked about how Kennywood Park and Sandcastle and Idlewild were sold to the company that owns Dollywood in Tennessee. And Kennywood is getting ready to open here soon on 412 day. So here is a little Kennywood trivia for you. The oldest still existing ride at Kennywood is the paddle boats, which opened in 1898. And do you guys know what the second oldest ride is?
I think I know, but I, it depends on how you calculate it.
I'm also wondering if it has to like still be a ride that's in existence? Because if not, then my guess would maybe be RIP, the log jammer.
Oh, okay.
Although that probably needed more technology than was available at the time. So I don't know.
Today's episode is supported by History Unerased, a provider of LGBTQ inclusive curriculums. How would your life have changed if you'd learned about influential LGBTQ figures in school? History Unerased helps teachers tell a more complete story of our nation's history. They say they're the country's leading group when it comes to bringing LGBTQ history into schools, something that's really important at a time when LGBTQ rights are under attack. And you can support this work by showing up to Yins Can't Erase Us. History Unerased is hosting an afternoon of community and celebration on Saturday, April 5th at 5801 in Point Breeze. The party will include food, drinks, music, trivia and a giveaway, plus an appearance from Danny Roberts from the New Orleans season of MTV's The Real World. Get your tickets on their website. It's unerase.org. And then click on the supporters tab to buy your ticket and contribute to a more inclusive future for us all.
This episode is brought to you by the Nissan Armada Pro 4X. With a twin turbo V6 engine, ready to propel your adventures, up to 8,500 pounds of towing capacity to haul all your favorite toys and space for eight passengers. Nissan's most powerful car yet will chew up and spit out anything you throw at it. Learn more about the all new 2025 Nissan Armada at NissanUSA.com. Towing capacity varies by configuration. See Nissan Towing Guide and Owner's Manual for additional information. Always secure cargo.
All right, we're back. I think that the answer would technically be the old mill because it's back. But it wasn't always around. Like it hasn't been around for the last 125 years, but I think it was.
You mean Garfield's Revenge?
Yeah, it was, it's been a lot of things. It's like, I think now they call it the new old mill.
Yes, yes.
But it was like 1900, 1901, something like that. I don't know why this is burned in my brain.
Yes, Megan, you are correct. It is the old mill. The old mill is the second oldest.
The old, old mill.
Yes, the old, old mill.
The OG old mill.
It was around since 1901. And like you said, it has, it has had a few different themes over the years. I remember it being the Garfield's Revenge. And it's actually one of the oldest dark rides in the country. So you know, the tunnel and the boat and everything, a very classic nostalgic Pittsburgh experience.
I love thinking about all the old timey Pittsburghers also having their first kisses on the old mill, like all the way back in the early 1900s.
I mean, there's actually a really funny YouTube video about all the people who had like, like unconventionally romantic experiences and when it was Garfield. Yes, so many of them are R rated when it was Garfield. So tread lightly, but you can go Google for that if you want. We're going to move now to some election news. Actually, I think probably from now until the primary on May 20th, we're probably going to have at least one or two little election updates per roundup show here. Mallory, what do we got this week?
Yeah, so we had talked about this a little bit on the show a couple of weeks ago, and now it is official, official. There will not be a single competitive city council race on the primary ballot in May. Unless you count a write-in campaign, that is the one caveat.
And if you're not following this, the way our city council works is that they do even an odd off-year elections. So this year it's districts two, four, six and eight.
Yeah, so district two is the one that's actually kind of the most interesting here. It's the only like fully open seat because Democrat Teresa Kelsmith is retiring. But everyone has now been thrown off of the Democratic ticket, except for her longtime chief of staff.
This is wild. So unusual.
I mean, kinda, like it's kind of unusual, but also like, I think it's like, it's fun and it feels like appropriately petty for city council. But it's all got to do with paperwork. Like that's what all of this comes down to. If you file your paperwork correctly, no one can throw you off the ballot.
Yeah, but one of the things that's interesting here is that one of the people who was thrown off the ballot is actually launching a write-in campaign. And the other person who was thrown off the ticket is backing her. So they're sort of like teaming up to saying like, we need change in this district. This is the West End. And they're going to try to see if a Neet Rower might be able to win through a write-in campaign. And just a little background on her, she runs a consulting firm. She worked for the city in the past. She was a founding member and chair of Pittsburgh's Gender Equity Commission. And she was also Mrs. Pennsylvania 2024.
Oh, no way.
Oh, wow. Okay, so that means she's like young-ish. Like you, you can't do that if you're too old.
Yeah, and so she's hoping to win against Kim Salientro, who again is the longtime chief of staff for Teresa Kelsmith. There is a Republican running in this race too, so no matter what, it will be competitive in the fall.
Overall, we just want people to have their choices, right?
Yeah.
And then in district four, this is where Anthony Coghill is running for reelection. And he was actually the one to challenge his opponent, saying he didn't have enough valid signatures on his petition to get on the ballot. And his opponent ended up withdrawing.
And then districts six and eight, they just don't have any challengers for the primary. So that's Erica Strasberger in six, over in the East End. No Republican challenger either, so she may coast to victory through the fall. And then council president Dan Lovell, he's in district eight. He's being challenged by a Republican, but no one in the primary. So we will talk about that again in November.
Yes.
And if you heard the show a couple of weeks ago, this is the first time, at least in this century, that there has not been a single competitive race in the primary. Again, with a little asterisk about this write-in campaign. So kind of unusual to show up at the poll and not really have choices.
Yeah, and keep following. We'll be updating you on more election stuff in the coming weeks. What else happened this week? We've been talking a lot about Pittsburgh Regional Transit's proposed cuts. We covered that they are proposing to cut nearly 40% of service, which is wild to think about. And a little background, the agency is facing a possible $100 million deficit if it can't get enough funding from the state. But this week, they opened their public comment period. So you can share your thoughts, feelings, concerns. That's open until June 18th at 5:00 PM. And there are a bunch of different ways that you can submit this. You can do it online survey, a phone call, you can even send some snail mail. And all this info is on PRT's website and in our show notes.
Yeah, and I know they're actually also planning to hold like in-person public hearings. So if you want to kind of show up, talk about the impact this could have on your life and do it in a crowd, you could attend one of those. The first one is coming up on Tuesday, April 29th. There are going to be two sessions, one from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and one from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And those will be at the Convention Center downtown.
You can also write to your state legislators too. Pittsburghers for Public Transit has a template on their website.
That's the local public transit advocacy group here in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, we'll also link that in our show notes. You know, make some noise.
So let's move on. The Nippon Steel, US Steel saga continues. Nippon and people who want the sale to go through are still lobbying hard with President Trump. In the meantime, Nippon has upped its sale price again. So the actual price to buy the company and all of its assets is $15 billion. That has not changed, but they are changing how much they are willing to invest in all of these assets. A lot of that being in the Mon Valley and some of these plants that, you know, leaders and folks who work there have been screaming for decades, really, really needs investment to bring them into the 21st century. They had previously offered $2.7 billion. They are now saying they are upping that to $7 billion that could flood into our region that they would spend to directly like affect this region and trying to get some of these facilities and other things up to a standard that is more in line with where this industry is.
And at least like kind of what they've promised is to try to help make these facilities like more environmentally, I don't know, friendly is quite the right word, but like more sustainable than they are currently.
Yeah, because our region is responsible for some of the worst pollution in the entire nation. And all of that floods through our valleys too. So folks who live in the Mon Valley have a really big interest in following the story and seeing how things shake out. Trump, of course, initially said that he opposed the deal. Back in February, he said that Nippon was going to make all these investments, but not actually buy the company. At the time, both US Steel and Nippon were like, what? We have not talked about that. We did not offer that. That's not what we want.
Speaking things into existence, I guess.
Yeah, right. And there's some other stuff happening behind the scenes too. There's an activist investor called Ancora. They have a 1% stake in US Steel. They're trying to oust US Steel's board and their CEO and take the company in an entirely different direction. So all of this was originally reported by the outlet Semaphore. And according to them, Ancora has had meetings with the Commerce Secretary and staffers in J.D. Vance's office. So the whole thing just continues.
This is the longest like will they, won't they?
Now I want someone to create the rom-com version of this.
Is there a rom-com version?
Nothing about this is romantic.
Is it like a love triangle? We've got like Nippon in Japan, US Steel here in Pittsburgh and.
Cleveland Cliffs and all their friends coming in hot in all kinds of different directions. Yeah.
Well, speaking of environmental concerns, we have been talking for two years now about the after effects of the train derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, like right by the Ohio, Pennsylvania border.
Yeah, that happened in 2023.
Yeah, and so there is a trial that started this week to determine who is going to pay out this $600 million class action settlement for the people who were affected by the derailment. So basically Norfolk Southern wants two other companies to help pay this out. The settlement money is supposed to go to everyone who lived within a 20 mile radius of the derailment. And the closer you live to the site, the more money you would get. And Norfolk Southern is saying that the owner of the railcar and the manufacturer of the toxic chemicals that spilled and got burned, that they are partially responsible for the disaster and therefore they should help pay up.
We should say too, that Norfolk Southern lost a similar lawsuit last year trying to get those same companies to help pay for the environmental cleanup portion of it. A trial, of course, is a very different thing. It's expected to last two to three weeks, at least the reporting that we've seen. But if you want to learn more about the disaster and just kind of how folks are living now, we did an episode about that a couple of months ago. So we'll drop that in our show notes too.
Claire is practicing her breathing for her upcoming yoga retreat in Bali. Has she ever done yoga before? No. But Claire worked with Empower on her savings and investment strategy. She got good at money, so she can be a little bad. Empower, invest well, live a little. Join our 19 million customers today at empower.com.
Past performance is not indicative of future returns. Investing involves risk. You may lose money. Advisory services are provided for fee by Empower Advisor Group, LLC, a registered investment advisor with the Securities and Exchange Commission. Om namaste.
Get ready for Netflix's gripping new medical drama, Pulse. Set in a cutting edge Miami trauma center, third-year resident Dr. Danny Sims is unexpectedly thrust into a promotion when beloved chief resident Dr. Xander Phillips gets suspended. Then, with the emotional and physical stakes at their highest, a storm will push the hospital and its residents to their limits. Witness how life can change in a heartbeat when you're operating under pressure. Watch Pulse, only on Netflix.
All right, Yins, here's what else happened in Pittsburgh this week. I will start us off with some non-baseball, sports ball of it all. The Steelers are a friggin' mess right now because we don't have a quarterback. I don't know how much y'all are following this, but Axios did a funny breakdown of why this typically matters in Pittsburgh. The TLDR of it all is that we win more when we have like a consistent leader in that position.
I mean, isn't that true of any football team?
Yeah, but I think Pittsburgh literally just does have like more examples of it over history. Like we've done better when we've had someone that's in that role and does well for a long time. I think it's sort of a chicken and egg situation, but. Anyway, one of the people currently in consideration for the job here right now is Aaron Rodgers. Are y'all familiar with him at all?
Not really, but I've been hearing a lot about, you know, commotion around him.
Isn't he an anti-vaxer?
Bingo. He was pretty beloved for a while because he's been a quarterback for such a long time. I think he's 41 and he won a Super Bowl with an old team. But yeah, he is a conspiracy theorist. He said AIDS and COVID were created by the government.
Oh, I didn't realize it was that far.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. He defamed Jimmy Kimmel by like randomly saying that Kimmel was associated with Jeffrey Epstein. That was not, there's never been any evidence of that.
This guy is really asking for a slander, for a libel lawsuit.
He's, there was a defamation lawsuit about that. He was in contention to be RFK's running mate for a time. And to me, this is the most egregious by far. He has said that Sandy Hook never happened, that the children who were murdered there never existed or were actors.
Yikes, 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 yikes. I thought he was just a like, I don't want the job guy. I didn't realize.
No, he's not just a lightning rod in the sports world. He is also a true nightmare in every other way.
We do not need him spewing this garbage to our Pittsburgh community. This actually worries me now.
I mean, we just got rid of Roethlisberger who had his own issues. This is not the direction I was hoping we would go in.
I know, and it is, has been a couple of years since we got rid of Roethlisberger, since he retired. Anyway, Rogers is woo-woo at best. Like that's a generous way to put it. But recently, Cam Hayward, who is a Steeler, he's the longest tenured player on the team right now. So he's like half coach, half. right now. So he's like half coach, half player at this point. People look to him for like, what is the direction the team's going in? He was on, I don't know, some random podcast. I'm actually not sure the source material anymore because I keep seeing this clip everywhere. But he's such a straight talker. And there's this rumor going around that if Cam Hayward is willing to go on a darkness retreat with Aaron Rodgers, that Aaron Rodgers would sign with the Steelers.
What?
Anyway, this is what Cam said on whatever podcast.
I ain't doing that darkness, darkness treat, retreat. I don't mean any of that crap. Like, either you want to be a Pittsburgh Steeler or you don't. That's, that's simple. That's the pitch.
What is a darkness retreat? Is it an Old Mill ride?
I hope so. But for days with a conspiracy theorist, apparently.
Oh, no. I don't know how we come out of that, but let's catch up on other things that we, you should know from this week. So there have been a lot of federal firings. This week, there was a lot of widespread firings at federal health agencies. And unfortunately, some local workers were affected by that. At least a dozen at the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health out in Pleasant Hills were laid off. And these people are responsible for conducting research and developing respirators that protect mine workers, first responders, building trades, nurses.
I bet Aaron Rodgers is celebrating this.
Oh, come on. It's, it's really sad to see this. And there's like a fallout that's going to happen because of it. So we're definitely thinking, you know, thinking about our neighbors here who are losing their jobs. And this just also comes as Pennsylvania joined other states to sue the Trump administration for canceling $11 billion in public health funding. So we're definitely think about this, you know, between Aaron Rodgers and all of these federal firings. There's a lot, there's a lot to be concerned with.
Yeah. I mean, and just to like bring it home, like, I don't know. I know, I know a lot of people now who have either been subject to these emails, like, a friend of mine literally has to turn in like what she does every, five things she does every week still, even though that email like went out to like, you know, justify your job. She's still doing it like all these weeks later, just because they're not like sure that that's a thing that they don't need to do anymore. One of my closest friends in another state just lost her job because she was responsible for messaging around the COVID vaccine. It's just hitting everybody at so many different levels right now. So let's talk about some good news. Good news for our friends over in Homer City. So that's about an hour east of Pittsburgh. There was an old coal station there that's getting rehabilitated. So they're getting $10 million to convert the space into a natural gas-fired power plant. And that energy will go into the grid to power data centers. If you, if you remember, we did a big episode about the grid and kind of what that means in relation to Three Mile Island coming back online. We'll link that in the show notes. But they're looking at 3,500 jobs, at least during the construction period, which could last maybe two years or so. So really exciting news for them.
Okay, Homer City, all right. Well, as you are heading into the weekend, one thing you should know, double check your parking signs if you're parking around the city because they are starting street sweeping. And the city's website says that residential neighborhoods usually get cleaned between 8:00 AM and 2:30 PM. But they're actually using a new program this year. They're using like smart cameras and AI to give out tickets for violations. So.
This is just the beginning of perma-surveillance. I don't like it.
I know.
Oh, we're way past that, Mallory. There's, our district attorney, Stephen Sappala, has cameras all over the city.
Yeah.
That's true. I should say this is a continuation of perma-surveillance.
If you don't want that $30 ticket, just be on the lookout.
And they've been giving tickets for this for forever, like in perpetuity. It's just that they're using computers to help them generate it now. If you live on a street that gets street sweeping, first of all, good for you because this is a service you want. But just don't forget to check your sign because we are at the time of year where that kicks off again. That is all for our home opening day here at CityCast Pittsburgh. Our music is by Benji, All the Kimonos and Cosmo Keys, with additional music from EpidemicSound.com. Mallory Falk is our executive producer. Sophia Lowe, Adrian Gonzalez, and Lizzie Goldsmith produced the show this week. Francesca DeBacco and Natalia Aldana wrote our newsletter. Kevin Gavin is our trivia master, and I am your host, Megan Harris. We will be back on Monday with more news from around the city. Have a great weekend, everyone.
You know, my mother hated Nebby neighbors, but I love them. I, I, you know, my boyfriend wants to move out in the country and I said, I gotta have neighbors. I don't care if they get on my nerves, you know? It's, I have to have neighbors.